Good evening. If I could have everyone's attention, please. Good evening. Thank you all for being here. I would like to call the January 22nd, 2018 Fayette County Board of Education Meeting to Order, and we will start with the roll call.
Ms. Melissa Bacon?
Here.
Mr. Douglas Barnett?
Present.
Mr. Raymond Daniels?
Present.
Mr. Darryl Love?
Present.
Ms. Stephanie Spire?
Present.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for being here. Finally, the weather, we have a break, and we've got a great crowd, so thank you all for being here. We start each meeting with a moment of silence, which will then be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, and then the reading of our mission statement. The Pledge of Allegiance and the mission statement will be led by Stephanie Spire, so if we could all stand for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our mission is to create a collaborative community that ensures all students achieve at high levels and graduate prepared to excel in a global society.
Thank you, and if there's nothing that needs to be lifted or changed on the agenda, a motion is in order to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stephanie, second by Doug. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposition, motion carries five zero. And each month, we have honorary board members that join us. In this month, we always have a teacher, a student representative, and a certified staff representative. So I'll take a moment to introduce our honorary board members for the month. Heidi Thompson Abel is our teacher representative, and she is the STEM instructor at Squires Elementary School. She's been a third and fourth grade teacher at the school and is in her third year in the STEM lab. She has served as the elementary representative for the Central Kentucky Educational Cooperative for two years. She was the teacher representative for Squires Student Voice Team last year and leads the STEM club this year. Heidi graduated from UK with degrees in education and communication. She earned her master's and principal certification at Eastern Kentucky University and her rank-one and doctorate from the University of Kentucky. Please help me welcome Heidi Thompson Abel. Our certified staff representative is Mr. Tom Armstrong. Mr. Armstrong is a master electrician and has worked in the maintenance department for 14 years. He's served on the staff advisory committee for the past 10 years. He also served on the Fayette County Educational Support Professional Association. Tom has been married to his wife Deborah for 44 years, and they have twin daughters and five grandchildren. Please help me welcome Tom Armstrong. Our student representative is Madison Alexander. Madison is a senior at Paul Lawrence Dunbar. She's a member of the Dunbar Student Voice Team, the choir, and acapella pop ensemble. Madison plans to attend Bluegrass Community and Technical College in the fall and plans to major in middle school math education. So yes, we'll grow one of our own here, yes, yes. She's the daughter of Mike Alexander and Angela Carlisle. When not at school, Madison likes to read and spend time with her four brothers and two sisters. Please help me welcome Madison. And once again, I will reiterate that the board has nothing to do with hiring, but I think that might be somebody who'd want to keep our eye on.
I would definitely agree, certainly.
We like to begin each school board meeting with a performance to showcase our talented students and high-quality arts instruction. Tonight, we welcome the choir from Tates Creek Elementary. This 40-member group of third through fifth graders is under the direction of Candace James. Tonight's selections reflect the diversity and uniqueness of their school. Please join the board in welcoming these Tates Creek students to the stage.
We are the Tates Creek Elementary School Elementary Chorus. Tonight, we would like to bring to you the message of peace. Our first song is entitled "May Peace Be Always With You." Please enjoy.
At TCE, we have started a program called Recorder Karate in our intermediate music classes. We have enjoyed earning different colored recorder belts as we progress through the songs. We are going to play three songs, Hot Cross Buns, Gently Sleep, and Merrily We Roll Along.
In our theme of peace, we are reminded of our great leader, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The next selection is entitled "Sing About Martin."
Sing about Martin.
Sing about Martin.
Sing about caring.
Sing about caring.
Sing about peace.
Sing about peace.
All around the world.
All around the world.
Sing about Martin.
Sing about Martin.
Sing about caring.
Sing about caring.
Sing about peace.
Sing about peace.
All around the world.
All around the world.
Sing about Martin.
Sing about Martin.
Sing about caring.
Sing about caring.
Sing about peace.
Sing about peace.
All around the world.
All around the world.
Sing about Martin.
Sing about Martin.
Sing about caring.
Sing about caring.
Sing about peace.
Sing about peace.
All around the world.
All around the world.
Our next selection is entitled "Always Sing Your Song About Staying Strong."
We don't have a melody that lives within our soul, a beautiful symphony to guide us as our life unfolds. Let this tune of happiness lead you on your way. And let music be your sunlight when your skies are gray. Always sing your song. Always lift your voice loud and strong. Keep a melody in your heart, your whole life long. And always, always sing your song. Music has the power to fill the heart with joy and fill the life with hope that cannot be destroyed. So whenever you feel like giving up, find your inner melody and just be strong. Always sing your song. Always lift your voice loud and strong. Keep a melody in your heart, your whole life long. And always, always sing your song. Always sing your song. Always lift your voice loud and strong. Keep a melody in your heart, your whole life long. And always, always sing your song. And always, always sing your song. Always sing your song.
Our final selection is to share how proud TCE is to be an official international baccalaureate school. This will I Am's version of the IB learner profiles. Also, special thanks to our parents who pick us up each week from chorus practice and brought here tonight. Also, to our teacher and parent volunteers, Mrs. Paul and Ms. McCauley, our school administrators, and also to Mrs. Shade, my mom, who served as our piano accompanist tonight.
What I am is fighter. What I am is thinker. What I am is knowledgeable. What I am is communicator. What I am is principal. What I am is special. There's nothing I can't achieve because in myself I believe in hope. I keep my head up high. Keep on reaching high. Never gonna stop, I'll be getting stronger. And nothing's gonna bring me down, no. Never gonna stop, gotta go, go. Cause I know I'll be getting stronger. What I am is caring. What I am is balanced. What I am is risk taker. What I am is lucky. What I am is open minded. What I am is special. There's nothing I can't achieve because in myself I believe in hope. I keep my head up high. Keep on reaching high. Never gonna stop, I'll be getting stronger. And nothing's gonna bring me down, no. Never gonna stop, gotta go, go. Cause I know I'll be getting stronger.
Friends and family of our musicians, please stand and be recognized. Thank you all for coming. That was quite a repertoire. Do they still call them flutophones? I remember doing that many, many years ago, and that's what got me into my music studies. But I love seeing our youngsters being introduced to music, and it's a universal language. So if y'all give me a second, I'm gonna introduce someone. Now, I'd like to reintroduce Madison Alexander, our student representative, to come forward and lead a special portion of tonight's recognitions. Please welcome Madison.
January is a special time in Fayette County public schools because it's the month we pause to thank our school board members for their hard work and dedication to students, families, and staff throughout our district. School board members work long hours attending meetings, reading information and reports, visiting school and classrooms, listening to their constituents, and responding to people's concerns. Overall, our district's education program exists to support student achievement. This can broadly define to include more ethic character education and job skills, but academic achievement is a core purpose of schooling. The local school board represents the community by making sure that tax dollars are used effectively and efficiently on behalf of all students. The Fayette County School Board, the Fayette County Board of Education Design submission, sets the overall tone and leads the charge for our success. Following the board members' example of dedicated service, everyone else falls in step to ensure the district steadily advances. With our students, families, staff, and community fully engaged in this campaign, FTPS can embody the school board's vision and put those plans in action. We are fortunate in our community to have compassionate board members who are concerned about meeting the needs of every student in every school. Tonight, we commend our board for their spirit of leadership, and we salute their relentless pursuit of excellence in education. These board members will also have high expectations of everyone else. They ask the tough questions and are committed to transparency, honesty, and openness. Ms. Melissa Bacon, Mr. Doug Barnett, Mr. Darryl Love, Mr. Raymond Daniels, and Ms. Stephanie Spire represent more than just the neighborhoods which were elected. These individuals are committed to ensuring a world-class education for every child in our community. Because of that commitment, they play a vital role in building Lexington for future generations. In recognition of that responsibility, Lauren Hatfield, Director of One Lexington, will read a proclamation honoring the board members.
It really is an honor for me to be able to speak to you all tonight. I come from a family of educators. My brother is the principal at Breckenridge Elementary. My sister-in-law is a special education teacher at Flirde Elementary. Before my father passed away, he was a guidance counselor at Meade County High School. And my husband has been a high school teacher for the last 13 years. Go Commodores, here in Fayette County. So I know what it takes in terms of having a successful and a wonderful school system, school district, and that's our school board. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the time, energy, and effort towards advocating for our young people. So on behalf of our mayor, Jim Gray, I want to present this proclamation to you, the school board, a commendation honoring the Fayette County Board of Education during the School Board Recognition Month. Whereas, public education ensures a prosperous quality of life and strong economic health for Lexington. And whereas, local school board members are leaders who are advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the schools to the public and the public's expectations back into our schools. Whereas, public schools nurture and train diverse student populations with the goal of giving students the knowledge, skills, and opportunities they need to succeed. And whereas, local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create an educational vision for our schools. Now, therefore, I, Jim Gray, Mayor of Lexington, commemorate the many accomplishments of Superintendent Manny Calk and the Fayette County Board of Education members, including Chair Melissa Bacon, Vice Chair Raymond Daniels, and members Doug Barnett, Stephanie Spire, and Darryl Love, and hereby declare January 2018 School Board Recognition Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hatfield. We appreciate the city's willingness to partner with our school district in pursuing excellence for all our students. A framed copy of your proclamation will hang here at It's About Kids Support Services. The school board's dedication is also respected by business leaders who know that strong schools are essential for a strong economy. We usually have a representative from Commerce Lexington here, but they send regrets that no one could attend tonight. Now, we hear from Jessica Hyler, President of the Fayette County Education Association, and Denise Gray, board member of the Fayette County Educational Support Professional Association.
Good evening. On behalf of the members of the Fayette County Education Association, I want to thank you for your committed service to the students, teachers, and parents of Fayette County. I hope you enjoyed your gifts. Had a little T-shirt in there from us. And as has been our practice the last couple of years, we made a donation on your behalf to Dance Blue, which benefits the UK Pediatric Oncology Unit. So thank you for all your service. But I want to say too, we couldn't do what we do in this district without your leadership, and we very much appreciate that and recognize that, especially now. Manny's laughing. When we all have to stand together and support our public schools and shout from the rafters how wonderful our public schools are. We really appreciate that. Also, wouldn't be thanking everybody sitting at this table if I didn't thank Ms. Tanya Daly, sitting over there, who helps keep the board together. So thank you, Ms. Daly, for all that you do.
Hello. My name is Denise Gray, and I'm here as a board member of the Fayette County Education Support Association. And we just want to say thank you for all that you all do. As you know, there is an attack on public education in our state legislature. And we're just so proud that you are standing strong and fighting for our kids. We, educational support staff, we go to school or go to work each day. I call it school, but it's work, but it's work with love. And we are just, we bow down, and we are grateful because we cannot do the jobs that we do on a daily basis without your support. And because of your support and all that you do for us and our students, we have donated $125 to the Relay for Life in your honor. And just thank you. Don't get tired. Stay strong. You have people who will be fighting on your behalf soon in the legislature. So we've got your back, and you've got ours.
We've got yours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hyler and Ms. Gray. Before tonight's meeting, members of our 16th District PTA hosted dinner for the school. Board members in the board, thank you for that special treat. The PTA is a wonderfully active partner with our Board of Education. To say a few words on behalf of the parents, here's the 16th District PTA parent, Chris Medley.
Good evening, everyone. Chris is not here. He had a family emergency, but I am Penny Christian, First Vice President of the 16th District PTA. And he wanted to give his respects, and he wanted me to tell you that this is the first time. I don't know how many PTA members we have in general in the audience, but it's the first time in a long time that we felt that there's an actual partnership and that there's an open line of communication between the board and between the district PTA and the local units as well. And we did, traditionally what we do is we feed the board members dinner before the meeting. And those who were there, we hope you enjoyed it. And if there's anything that we can do, yes, I can't remember who said it, we do have your back. Some of us were in Frankfurt last week for Children's Advocacy Day, and we went Some of us were in Frankfurt last week for Children's Advocacy Day, and we went and spoke to our legislators, and we explained the concept of partnership, and we explained the importance of public education. And we know, we know that this board and this superintendent supports public education, and they support the PTA as well. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you, families, for all the support the PTA provides for our district. Lastly, I would like to invite Superintendent Emmanuel Calk to share some final thoughts.
Well, I would like to add my own appreciation to this esteemed board for your leadership, for your guidance through the good times, through the tough times, and through the times that we face today, looking at the challenges, but more importantly, with a focus on the opportunities. We wouldn't be here in this position to really create a world-class system of great schools if we didn't have the leadership from a peak performing board. And so with that, on behalf of all of our employees, our entire community, our students and families, we would dedicate gratitude and we say thank you for your service. Let's give them a hand.
Thank you, Mr. Calk. I appreciate FCPS asking me to be a part of this important event. On behalf of my peers, thank you, board members, again for your continuous support, which affords us the opportunity to thrive in our educational endeavors.
Thank you all so much. I know, I probably speak for all of us in that we wouldn't be doing this if we don't absolutely love kids. You all have our back, we have your back, and we couldn't do it without each of us partnering together. And I know we talked about this when we were eating dinner, and I still use that word that keeps coming up in my mind, is cohesiveness and partnership. And I've seen more of that this past 18, 24 months than I have in a long, long time. So, we can't do it by ourself, you can't do it by yourself, not to sound cliche, but we're all in this together, just to do whatever's the best thing to do for our kids. This is definitely a calling for us. There's stressful times, but there's nothing better than to see young students perform and being introduced to music, or awarding someone their diploma when they walk across the stage. So, there's far more blessings doing this than there is the stress, although sometimes it's been a little stressful. It truly, truly is one of the biggest blessings that we could ever do. So, thank you all so much. And I'll ask my colleagues to meet me down front, and I can't talk anymore because then I'll get sentimental and I'll start gushing. Now, we'll continue with our monthly student and staff recognition. The National Young Arts Foundation has cited two students in the SCAPA program at Lafayette High School among the most promising young artists in the visual, literary, design, and performing arts. Erin Choate was named a finalist, which is the top honor, in modern contemporary dance, while soprano Catherine Copeland... While soprano Catherine Copeland received honorable mention in voice. Since, yes, Catherine, come on down. Since 1980, the National Young Arts Foundation has partnered with educators in after-school, summer, and community arts programs to seek out, identify, and recognize emerging young talent. The winners gain access to a comprehensive program offering financial, professional, and artistic development opportunities through the course of their careers. Please join the board in recognizing Erin and Catherine for this outstanding accomplishment. Fayette County students excelled in the 17th Annual Kentucky Colonel Sixth Grade Showcase, which is designed for students who are sometimes lost between elementary and middle grades in Governor's Cup contests. In this showcase, schools are grouped into competitive divisions of several teams each. Windburn Middle School topped the latest competition, bringing home a first place overall and placing first in the quick recall portion. The Windburn Academic Team is coached by Robin Wilson. Please join the board in congratulating them on their success. Friends and family of our Windburn students, please stand and be recognized as well. In addition, Tates Creek Middle School finished second overall in the sixth grade showcase and placed second in the quick recall portion. This team is coached by Stephanie Adams. Please join the board in recognizing these Tates Creek students. Friends and family of our Tates Creek students, please stand and be recognized. Morton's top-seeded A-Team defeated number three Edith J. Hayes, 42 to 36, in the finals of Fayette County Public School Girls' Middle School Basketball Tournament. Morton, which went undefeated in league play, was the A-Team regular season champion and shared top GPA honors with Tates Creek. Friends and family of our basketball champions, please stand and be recognized. The Mustangs also closed out the season with a Final Four finish in the Kentucky Basketball Association's Gold Bracket State Tournament. Morton is coached by Jeremy Jones, Harisha Carter, and Dylan Kisek. In the B-Team Girls' Tournament, Beaumont defeated Morton 34 to 20 for the championship. Please join the board in congratulating the Mustangs on a successful season. Southern Middle had won the regular season crown but was upset at home by fifth-seeded Morton in the tournament semifinals. Number-two seed Beaumont then knocked off Morton for the title. The Colts are coached by Anthony Wilson. Please join the board in recognizing these girls on their success. She can go behind. There we go. All right, ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Friends and family of our Beaumont girls, please stand and be recognized. Edith J. Hayes Middle School has been designated a 2017-18 National Beta School of Distinction for increasing chapter membership as its students strive for academic achievement, exemplary character, demonstrated leadership, and service to others. The Hayes group received a banner to display at school and will be recognized during the National Beta Convention in Savannah, Georgia in June. Please join the board in recognizing the Beta Club members and their sponsor, April Deener. Friends and family of our Beta Team, please stand and be recognized. Several teams represented Fayette County schools well in the inaugural KHSAA Dance Championships. Paul Lawrence Dunbar took first place in the Large Kick Division under Coach Teresa Champ. Please join the board in congratulating the Dunbar Dance Team. Friends and family, please stand and be recognized of our Dance Team. And in the Large Jazz Division and Large Hip-Hop Divisions, the Dance Team from Lafayette High School brought home second place. They are coached by Kara Terry. Please join us in honoring them as well. Friends and family, please stand and be recognized of our Lafayette dancers. In the Kentucky Theater Association State Conference, the production of Alice in Wonderland by the School for Creative and Performing Arts at Lafayette High School earned first-place honors and straight superior ratings at the Kentucky Theater Association State Conference. Jordan Vecio was selected for the All-Star Cast. This state-level win qualified the SCAPA group to compete at the Southeastern Theater Conference High School Festival in Mobile, Alabama in March. These Lafayette students are under the direction of drama teacher Amy Kissling. Please join the board in congratulating this group. Friends and family of our Lafayette students, please stand and be recognized. Brooke Powers, a 7th grade math teacher at Beaumont Middle School, was presented with a Milken Educator Award by State Commissioner of Education Stephen Pruitt and Milken Family Foundation Senior Program Administrator Greg Gallagher. She is the only Milken Award winner from Kentucky this year and is among the 44 honorees for 2017-18. The Milken Educator Awards have rewarded and inspired excellence in the world of education by honoring top educators around the country. Brooke earned a bachelor's degree in 2005 in agricultural communication, education, and leadership from the University of Kentucky and a master's in teacher leadership from Eastern Kentucky University in 2013. Brooke received $25,000 and a membership in the National Milken Educator Network, a group of more than 2,700 top teachers, principals, and specialists dedicated to strengthening education. She will also attend a Milken Educator Forum in Washington, DC in March. Please join the board in applauding Brooke on this outstanding accomplishment. I'm not sure if she made it or not, but Brooke, are you here? Let's give her a hand anyway. And we'll now continue our staff recognitions with our 212 Degrees Awards.
Good evening. At 212 degrees, water is hot, but at 212 degrees, it boils. The difference is just one degree, but it is significant. Boiling water creates steam, and that steam has enough energy to power a freight train. Reaching our mission of creating a collaborative community that ensures all students achieve at high levels and graduate prepared to excel in a global society requires an extra degree of effort from our employees. And we know that every day, we have countless employees who go above and beyond in the service of students. To highlight those efforts, each month, we honor employees at our school board meetings for giving 212 degrees. This evening, we will honor four individuals for their efforts to ensure that the basic needs of our students and their families were met, no matter what the weather may be. According to the most recent data published by Kentucky Youth Advocates, 16% of the children living in Fayette County are facing food insecurity. Putting that in terms of the students we serve, it means that more than 6,700 of our children may not know where their next meal is coming from. The men and women who work in our Family Resource and Youth Service Centers work diligently with community partners to collect donations to meet that need. Those efforts mean that each Friday, many of our schools send home backpacks filled with food to help provide for our families, for our students and their families over the weekend. In 2005, one school in Fayette County had a food backpack program. Today, 35 of our Family Resource and Youth Service Centers are collectively sending home more than 2,350 food backpacks each week. On the heels of a two-week winter break, our schools opened to unusually cold temperatures the first week of January. District officials closed school on Friday, January 5th, when the temperature dipped below zero and the National Weather Service issued a wind chill advisory. In anticipation of a possible closure, some of our schools were able to send students home with their backpacks on Thursday, but others were not. Unwilling to let cold weather keep our students and their families from receiving support, several of our staff members went above and beyond to deliver food to the homes of their students. We know that this happened across our district, and we hate to miss anyone, but the four people we honor this evening are the ones that we are aware of. Please join me in celebrating the following men and women for coming in on a day when schools were closed and wind chills were in the double-digit negatives to pack food backpacks and personally deliver them to the homes of our students to ensure that they and their families had food for the weekend. Dana Adams, the Youth Service Center Director at Beaumont Middle School; Dennis Beal, the principal from Beaumont Middle School; Steve Durson, a social worker from Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School; and Casey Spicer, the Family Resource Center Coordinator from Garden Springs Elementary School. I think we got them here under false pretenses tonight, so I think they're in shock.
All right, I believe we have one proclamation, National School Counseling Week, which will be read by Mr. Ray Daniels.
Proclamation celebrating February 5th through 9th, 2018, as National School Counseling Week. Whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in middle, I mean in school, and accordingly Fayette County Employee School Counselors in all of its elementary, middle, and high schools. And whereas flexibility and responsiveness are hallmarks of our school counselors as they serve students in their offices, in their classrooms, in hallways, on playgrounds, in cafeterias, in the community, and at home. And whereas, school counselors support student success by working with teachers and other educators to help students develop and build self-understanding and self-awareness, and learn to better relate to others. And whereas, the work of counselors is individual as the students they serve and includes classroom guidance lessons, individual academic student conferences, as well as individual and group counseling to students with academic, social, behavioral, and crisis issues. And whereas, school counselors play an important role in identifying the needs of children, observing students in the classroom, coordinating efforts with other school specialists, interpreting tests to provide information about abilities, achievement, interests, and needs; coordinating student assistant teams, and overseeing the implementation of 504 and gifted and talented plans. And whereas, serving as a bridge between home, school, and community, school counselors work with families to focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, helping families access community resources, making referrals to community resources, and consulting with agencies, outside agencies. Now therefore be proclaimed that the members of Fayette County Board of Education hereby join the rest of the country in celebrating February 5th through 9th, 2018, as National School Counseling Week. We have further proclaimed that this proclamation be spread on official minutes of the Board of Education.
Thank you so much. We have no resolutions, therefore I will turn it over to you, Mr. Superintendent, for your reports, communications, and other business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to add my own congratulations to the students and staff we honored this evening, and also welcome our student, teacher, and Class V representatives this evening. Heidi, Madison, and Tom, you represent important voices here at the table, and we encourage you to share your thoughts and observations so that the actions taken tonight will be the best they possibly can be. Please feel free to ask questions and participate in our discussion this evening. Your voices and perspectives are welcomed and encouraged. Under the Academic Services Update, the Superintendent's Report, we'll be hearing from one of our Empowerment Zone principals about the ongoing improvement efforts at our school in partnership with our district support team. So at this time, I would like to invite Russell Cave Elementary Principal Amber and Julie Wright, the school's G, come on down. You've got to support, that's what that leadership's all about. You've got to work your leader. I had to do it. I'm not going to tell you how long I had to do it, but it was a long time. All right, and so as you hear this storyboard, again, it goes to your leadership for providing the additional resources into our empowerment zone model, as well as being part of our comprehensive district improvement plan, which you approved at the planning meeting this month. So I turn it over to you, Amber.
All right. Thank you guys for inviting me to give an update on Russell Cave's journey through the empowerment zone process. Superintendent Coff always imparts with us that we should always tell our school's own story. So I don't know anyone better to tell our story than our very own Mustangs.
What is one thing everyone needs to know about Russell Cave?
They have role models for little kids.
Russell Cave has high attendance.
We have amazing teachers that help us learn our high levels.
That we always learn high levels.
Most students can talk two languages.
What does everyone need to know about Russell Cave?
I think something that's really important for people to know is that everyone here is all in.
Another thing I think is that our demography does not determine our destiny, no matter where our students are coming from. It does not mean that they can't achieve it at a certain level.
Our parents are becoming advocates for their children. We're working to have them ask questions and get them involved and really advocate for their kids.
I think our kids, more than any school I've ever been, have a sense of community. They support each other and they cheer for each other, and that falls into our staff as well, that we support each other and cheer each other on.
You need to know that we have ESL teachers in every classroom to help support us.
You also need to know that we have hard-working kids, and they are always here to meet our expectations.
And finally, you need to know that we have very high expectations for all of our students and our teachers.
How have we changed instruction this year?
Well, we've continued to plan with the end in mind and really breaking down the standards and seeing what the kids need to know. We've incorporated the wealth of Wonders' resources into our instruction and really updated with TPT strategies.
And to add along with that, we have refined our Tier One instruction.
We've worked to implement strategies to reduce our novice students.
And one of our goals this year was to really work as problem solvers. And with all of the new that came this year at Russell Cave, I think we've really seen our teachers become problem solvers.
I think we are taking a deeper look at our MAP results and using those to help guide our instruction.
Planning small groups with more of an intentional focus.
We've also been very intentional to use Wonders' ELD resources in our core instruction.
What results are you seeing that tell you that our Mustangs are growing?
Well, we saw huge MAP gains from fall to winter, and what's really cool is we're also starting to see correlations between MAP and the Common Assessments for Math and Reading.
We have noticed that our kids have a good, deeper understanding of the content. We're seeing true mastery that the students are retaining the content.
And something that Ms. Katrin has mentioned that struck a chord with me is that we have to expect our students, we have to know, to let our students know that we expect them to not score the novice area, to not score area of concern. So a really deeper, higher expectation, realistic expectations for our students.
I've seen a lot of great leaps in the phonics skills in our students.
Our students aren't just making small steps, they're making huge gains as we move forward.
For ELL growth, we've used the TEL assessment to progress monitor our students and see growth.
What has being an empowerment zone school meant to you and the students at Russell Cave?
It definitely reaffirms what great things are happening at Russell Cave with the people coming in and saying all the great things that we are doing.
Just to tag team off of that, it's able to put a lens on our students to let everyone know that we do have a story, and we welcome people to come in and to understand our story as well.
I've been appreciative of the support network that we've received, the frequent feedback in the classroom, and the collaboration opportunities with other schools.
And to play off of that, I think that the support and feedback from the district has been really valuable, especially because it gives us an outside perspective on our strengths as well as the places we need to grow.
We've seen a lot of accountability, and we've also seen more support in our school.
Our students are really taking the challenges and moving forward. We get a lot of feedback on our teaching practices and steps to move forward.
All right. So being designated an empowerment zone school created a huge opportunity for us to make a big change at Russell Cave. So we hit the ground running this summer and made some pretty direct and some pretty bold belief statements. So these are the belief statements that we have at Russell Cave that we hold our students and our staff to, and it's posted in all common areas in every classroom. So we believe that we're all in, we're bold in our approaches, we focus on what we can control instead of what we can't. I expect students and teachers to be problem solvers. Demography does not determine our destiny. We'll stay positive in the face of adversity, and we are balcony people. So anytime we have conversations around data that might be hard, these are the beliefs that we hold ourselves to. Just a little background on our students. Our population hasn't changed too much over the past five years. Our numbers have stayed pretty stable. We do serve a very high population of English-language learners, with 78% of our students being Hispanic. We have 88% of our students under free and reduced lunch, and 62% of our students do receive direct ELL services. One thing that this does not show is that we do have a very stable population. Like I said, we have very high attendance, we have a low transientsy rate, a low migrant population, and our families do love our schools. So we have seen a lot of generations of families come through Russell Cave. And most of our students come in bilinguals. You heard that in the video as well. Just a few academic metrics. These are our Brigant scores over the past five years. So as you can see, this year, 96% of our students came in not ready for kindergarten. When you break that down into male, female, and Hispanic, the numbers are pretty alarming. The state average is 72% ready for kindergarten, and the Fayette County average is 55% ready. So this year, we are the second lowest in the district and the third lowest in the state. And there's two facets to some of the kindergarten readiness. Not only do we have an issue with Spanish versus English, but also a poverty barrier as well, so they already come in with a language deficit. I am happy to report, since the last time I was here, we did get our K-Prep scores, and over 60% of our students in both reading and math made strong improvements. So we saw good growth, and our gap scores looked really good as well. So the moment everyone has been waiting for, we've gotten our MAP scores. Now, first grade has not finished taking MAP since our snow days. But this is a comparison of the same group of kids. So our kindergarten last year are our first graders this year. So this is a comparison. You can see the change over time. In reading, we are seeing gains. We're not seeing as high gains as we would like, but we did just implement a new series. We are doing some things to combat that. But in math, you can see 26-point gains, 34%. We had huge gains in our 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade across the board. And in math, K through 3, over 50% of our students made double-digit gains on their MAP scores. So we're pretty proud of that. We do have several strategies in place this year. We are an empowerment zone team, so monthly, we have a walkthrough, and we have a debrief session of what everyone sees, as well as an action plan. No one leaves the room without having some job to do and follow-up from that, so that's been very helpful. We were also given a school-based instructional specialist who helps plan with our teams and coach teachers. We've implemented a PSYOP planning protocol. They consult with our ELL team. We also have done something a little different than other schools in the district. The Wonders' reading series that we have this year has an English-language development component, and we've decided to add an additional block to our component, and we've decided to add an additional block to our literacy in order to give some of our kids some more vocabulary and some more literacy development, and that's really been paying off, especially in our MAP scores with growth. Another thing that we've decided to do this year, after analyzing MAP results, is really look at standards mastery. So we're going to be doing sub-release days every month. We're going to be looking at Marzano's standards, his rubrics, to meet the standard. We're building in a reteach and mastery time for our students that have deficits. We're incorporating formative assessments, flashbacks, and exit slips, and we've refined our PLC protocol to match the continuous improvement cycle that the district has adopted, so Plan Do Study Act. All of our teachers have been trained in AVMR math recovery strategies, so that is giving them a leg up, and I think one of the biggest reasons we saw huge gains in math. We're co-teaching with both ELL and special education. You will very rarely see a student at Russell Cave receiving pull-out services. Most of our services are provided in the classroom, because everyone can benefit from ELL or special education knowledge. And then something that we started this year were 20-day plans. So all of my teachers create 20-day plans after a unit of study, and they disaggregate that data, and they reflect on what went well, what didn't, and what we're going to do to accelerate growth for all students. This is just a copy of what our PLC protocol looks like. It's pretty rigorous. We don't get through all of this in one meeting, but this is our Plan Do Study Act. Just a copy of our PSYOP planning template. There are different checkboxes on the side to remind our teachers to implement English language learning strategies in every lesson, every day. We're keeping intentional data, and we're tracking that and holding teachers accountable. So just a snapshot of our weekly assessments that we take and our unit assessments for Wonders. And then we're also involving our community. So a few things that we're doing with our community. You saw Ms. Hatfield speaking earlier, and we're actually a part of the One Lexington Neighborhood Engagement Team that the mayor has started. We're excited about that, because that's bringing some much-needed services and programming to the Windburn neighborhood, which at least 80% of our kids are serviced in that area. We've also done a lot of work this year with the Equity and School Support and Community Engagement Staff. So Rose Santiago has helped us a lot with making sure that we are using standards mastery. We're also working with the Northside Library to incorporate some homework help for our families. We've incorporated the Real Men Read program, and I'm really excited that our staff and our community and a lot of our parents have partnered with us. So we have 12 men coming to read to every one of our classrooms, and our kids love it. So that's been very well received. We've also implemented our First Friday Lunch, and so every grade level, every month, has a time where the parents can come in and eat lunch with their kids, they can talk to teachers, and they also have a debrief session with me. So I give them updates on what's going on, how they can help, and then they can ask questions as well. Something new that I just started was the partnership with the Childcare Council for kindergarten readiness. So we know that our readiness scores are not where we want them to be. So this year, we've partnered with the Childcare Council, and they are providing a grant, and they're going to help us with some kindergarten readiness tactics. So we're excited about that. And then our PTA this year has kind of latched on to the Family University and would really like to start doing some academies on our own at Russell Cave. So we're excited for that as well. So I just wanted to say some thank yous. We have the best students, and they work at high levels every day, and our staff is truly the hardest-working staff you'll see here in Fayette County. Superintendent Calk and the board, we are so thankful for being afforded the opportunity to be an EZ school, and for you all encouraging us and allowing us to share our story. And then Julie and Dr. Ferris, their leadership and wisdom and guidance mean more than they will ever know, even though they don't think that. It's been very helpful, and we appreciate it more than anything. And something that we say at Russell Cave this year, this is posted in all my teachers' room, is we have to stay positive, work hard, and make it happen this year. And so far, I think we've done, we've taken big steps into making that happen. So thanks for letting us share.
Thank you. Thank you. You want to break the protocol? Hold them up one more time?
I like that they're laminated and all.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Those are educators for you.
Yeah.
Laminating.
Board team, any questions? Comments?
Anybody?
No, I'll just say this, because I said this to the last group that we had. It's really good for you guys to, first of all, thank you for your time and all your efforts, and of course, it all knows, you know, it's all stars with a great leader. Appreciate that. And it's good to see that the investments that we're making. I mean, so I want to look at Manny when you talked about Wonders, because we always, we'll always have this story about Wonders at Family U, when all the kids could say, "Hey, you use Wonders? I use Wonders. I use Wonders." And I think it's one of those, it's interesting to hear you talk about how you took it to the next level by adding an additional block. Because that's an effective tool that we've made an investment, but you've actually leveraged that tool. And so it's good to see, because one of the things for us, it's, we didn't mind providing the additional resources, but it's nice to see that immediately we're starting to see impact from that. And so thank you guys for sharing your story.
Also, granted, Manny, because we have a thing about Real Men Read, it just kind of blew up, and I don't know that Manny knew exactly what to do with it, and he wasn't expecting it to be this big. I'm like, that's a great problem to have. So we love it. I love it when Real Men Read, because I can look at him and go, "See? We need it. We need it."
My husband is having a blast. He's partnered with a third-grade class.
There you go.
And I don't even know about it, and I show up, and they hand me a book out the car drive-through window, and they're like, "This is for your husband. He's coming tomorrow."
Love it. Love it, love it.
But he loves it.
Love it. And everything, again, it sounds like it's all coming together, especially, you know, we have paid for MAP for years and years and years and years, and I really, for the first time, feel like it's really, really being utilized, and you all are being able to see that correlation with the gains, double-digit gains in MAP. I would rather have double-digit gains in MAP than I would anything else, because that tells you your student is progressing and how much they are progressing.
And I think it's a big testament, when you take into account that a lot of these students are coming in who are not ready for kindergarten, and they're making that double-digit gain. And I think that is a testament, not only to you, but to these folks over here, and I'm proud of these folks over here. Yes.
Love it.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, thank you.
Next, I'd like to call on our acting equity officer, Mr. Darrell Thompson, to give the board an update on our work with the Equity Council.
Good evening. Wanted to take this opportunity to introduce, not just to the board, but to the public, the new Equity Council and its members. As you all know, and many of y'all may not know, the Equity Council is a standing committee to the Board of Education, and that kind of makes up the leadership capacity that the board has from these Monday meetings to Tuesday meetings that take place every month. And an extension to that, some of the research that goes into looking at the equity issues across the district. So I'd like to have those members, once I call them, come down, so that you all can public interface with them, one by one. Denise Brown, Betsy Dobbs, Dr. McCormick, Brent Nathaniel, Sherelle Pierre, and Carlos Ross. These members are elected to the Equity Council through December 20, 2019. In addition, we have five appointed members that are made by each respective board member. Some were able to be here, some were not. Sharon Moefield Boswell, Craig Kamik, Abdul Muhammad, Jervis Middleton, and Tori Woods. Now, the Equity Council is now made up of 11-member body. Back last year, the board decided to reduce that committee down to a member, a member from 15 members to 11-member body, and we now have a full composition of that committee operating fully. We look forward to the work that they're going to be doing. And so you'll see the mission of the Equity Council is to monitor and analyze equity issues, advise the Board of Education, and advocate success for all students. So Team ECC is right here before you, and we certainly thank them for their commitment, more so about your advocacy for every child and all the success of every school and Fayette County Public Schools. So I welcome and present to you our new Equity Council Committee that will serve out this year and the remainder of 2019, and we look forward to the work. And as you all can see from our strategic plan, welcome, and we expect excellence as our strategic plans provide. So just give them a round of applause for their commitment. So I'm going to yield to them, if you all have any questions, any statements you want to say to the board, and likewise, the board to your new Equity Council.
Well, I just want to reiterate that the meetings are open to the public, and there are committees, and everyone can have a role. And I see people up here, like I'm in, Mr. Nathaniel, who attended almost all the meetings, and now he's on the committee, and I want to really echo that there's a place for everybody to be involved here. And so I'm excited about the future of this organization and this committee.
Thank you all.
Thank you all so much.
So thank you, Mr. Thompson. Thank you, our Equity Council members, for your leadership during this academic year. I will now turn, oh, before we do that, our chief operating officer. Myron, who is here as monthly construction progress report, and...
Thank you, Superintendent Calk. We still don't have a slide deck for any ongoing construction projects, but in your agenda book on page 131, I believe, is a listing of a report that we provide twice a year that sort of provides a snapshot of the recent projects that we had, both the combination of renovations and new construction. I believe this document was generated by our auditors a few years ago, just so the board would get an aggregate view of sort of where the construction progress has been. So just wanted to share that with you and to see if there are any questions about that. And then just to let you know that I think Marilyn shared out at the planning meeting that we will be going to bid on our new elementary school on February the 8th, so we are looking forward to getting that back and sort of breaking ground and having, again, more slides to share with you as that school progresses.
Very good.
Thank you, Myron. Any other questions for the board?
Keep the buildings coming.
Yeah.
Keep them coming.
Thank you.
And now I turn the meeting back over to you, Madam Chief.
Thank you so much. This is now the time of the meeting. For those that have signed up to speak to an action item on the agenda, will have an opportunity to speak, but the items are not action items. So those persons will have an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting. We will now move on to the section of approval of routine matters. So a motion is in order to approve the minutes of the December 4th, 2017 board meeting, and the minutes of the December 18th, 2017 regular board meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Darrell, second by Doug. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries five zero. And a motion is in order to approve the consent item listing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ray, second by Stephanie. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries five zero, and that takes us down to the approval of our action items.
So thank you, board. First, on your agenda for action this evening is the Contract of Freedom Tours. We're asking the board to approve a contract for the field trip at Mary Todd Elementary School for those students, and our acting school chief, Julie Wright, is here, if you have any questions.
There's no questions or comments. A motion is in order to approve a contract with Freedom Tours LLC.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Motion by Doug, second by Ray. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, board members. As you recall, in November, you approved the RFP, Soliciting Scholastic Reviews, for two of our schools. Tonight, I'd like to invite our acting senior director of school leadership, Sharonda Morton, and our associate director of federal state and magnet programs, Dr. Daly, to come up, to come forward and speak with us about the process, use the score, well, speak to us about the process, and to share with us who we're asking the board to vote on regarding the contract to Cambridge Education. This is, well, it's exciting for me. I'm excited.
If you're excited, we're excited.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As you know, we have secured our vendor for...
You guys speaking to Mike.
There we go.
I'm sorry. Let's try it again.
There you go. Much better.
I'm really kind of soft-spoken. As you know, we've been working throughout this process to secure a vendor for our RFP process for, to provide services for Arlington Elementary in Booker T. Washington. So we'd like to kind of review and kind of give you an update on how this process worked and how we were able to come to our conclusion this evening. First, we were asked to conduct the comprehensive review in our low-performing schools. We had to identify and recommend the key indicators, which were comprehensive school improvement, continuous growth, and achievement for all students. We had, we were to, we identified potential reasons for schools' performance and lack of progress. Those are the things that we included in our RFP. And then we are going to make, we are here to make recommendations regarding the next steps for the school and district to improve and sustain student growth and achievement with this vendor. Our team membership, we had experienced educators with expertise. We also had school improvement and school turnaround folks, effective leadership, standards aligned to curriculum instruction assessment, and multi-tiered system of support. These are all part of our RFP. Knowledge and experience with diverse student populations was one of our components. They also had to focus on English language learners, our students with disabilities, and students with historically underserved groups. What we did at first was we actually went out and met with each one of the schools to provide information to their staff, so I met with them, and we had questions and answers with them. Their SPDM members were invited to attend those meetings. Next, we came back, and we actually, our, the, it went out to the public. We received the three vendors who were interested on December 15th. We had those vendors, we removed all the names and so forth, and shared with various folks within the, within the school community, from school principals to SPDM members, staff here on, on our, here at CIA, our CIA staff. Also, we included people within our community. Special thanks to Rolanda Worford, who helped us to get more people to come in and serve on our committee. Special thanks to Jessica Hyler, who served. So we had a wide variety of people to serve on the actual scoring. We had about 25, we invited 25 folks to actually work with us, and of that 25, we had 18 to actually respond and participate. It included, as, their community members, parents, stakeholders, I mean, yeah, community members, parents, district leaders, FCA principals, and the SPDM members. Once we had those 25 names, we actually sent them an email to invite them to score. We sent them an electronic copy, and they could also request a paper copy. So either way, they, we wanted it in their hands. They were given it, and they had about, about a week to look at it and score it. The scoring sheets could be returned to us, be an email or by paper, thanks to Louise Dobins, who added all the scores together. And we came up with who we felt was, you know, based on their input, not ours, who they felt was the best vendor for this four-hour project. We then invited them in for a meeting, and they came in on that Wednesday, as many, well, we had 18 to show up, which was good. And we had, we did small group conversations, had small group conversations. They did plus deltas. They shared what they liked and what they didn't. They shared what was important to them. We did a group. We also had small group, they had individual input, and then we did plus deltas. We actually put forms up on the wall, and we had them to do, to provide us with information, which we can share with you all if you'd like, but also would like to return that to the other vendors who were not selected, so they'll know how the committee felt, and maybe they can use that information to grow themselves. Today, we were able to, we actually had a conversation with our vendor, and we're ready to move forward.
I think one of the unique things about the process was that the individual scoring and the group scoring yielded the same result. So you had a blind scoring, as Ms. Morton mentioned, that they didn't know who the vendors were. So when they did it individually, they recommended vendors in order, and then when we came together in those groups, it yielded those same results, which really adds validity to the process.
And this evening, they're finding out who it is, because we kept it a secret from them. them.
That's right.
We, uh, elected to go with Cambridge Education. You're, they're just an awesome group. Um, their leaders in school improvement reform. Their collaborative partnerships include Mass Insight as well as Boston Consulting Group. They have experience in supporting urban and school districts, which was one of the questions that were asked. Uh, so they've worked with New York Public Schools, Charlotte Mecklenburg, Philadelphia Public Schools, and Gates Foundation Met, uh, Met Project. They have extensive experience in school turnaround, which is something we are vested in, and a diverse professional staff.
And I would also add, um, you know, working with Shelby County, Memphis, and then it merged with Shelby County. But when you think about Cambridge Education, the organization, they're situated in Massachusetts, but the Cambridge is in Cambridge, Mass, is Cambridge, England. That's where it started. And they're one of the foremost thought leaders in this space, um, looking at internationally. So they've been doing this work with school improvement in England for years and brought their model here. And so, um, it was really exciting conversation to hear their approach, how they're going to engage our families and communities to reimagine public education, um, in those two, uh, schools, um, as a partner. So just wanted to add that on as well.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Questions or comments? If there's no questions or comments, a motion is in order to approve the recommended firm, Cambridge Education, to, to, to conduct the scholastic and school improvement reviews at two elementary schools.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Ray, second by Stephanie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, team. And I would also add, as we look at the next item, is that our internal team here will be trained in that process, so we'll be able to do that, um, audit using their tool, their framework, in other schools as the need arises. Right? So it's all about building an internal capacity. Um, next, for your consideration, is the revision of a job description for the district PBIS coach. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, we started bringing you revisions, uh, to job descriptions each time we have a vacancy. This is not a new position and.
No new money.
No new money. Jennifer Dyers here to, uh, respond to any questions you may have.
Only additions are the measures of success in the world language component. There have been no other changes to the job.
I think we reviewed this at the planning meeting. If there's no other questions or comments, a motion is in order to approve the revised job description of the district positive behavioral interventions and supports coach.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stephanie, second by Ray. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries five zero.
You need a laminated sign.
I love it. Yes. Thank you, board. Thank you, Jennifer. Our next item is procedural requests that we complete every year as conditioned for approval of our, um, family resource youth service center grant funds agreeing to set, I'm sorry, agreeing to a set of assurances to be included in center operation plans. Director of Student Support and Services, uh, Ms. Faith Thompson's here tonight. If you have any questions.
Questions, comments? If not, we also reviewed this at our planning meeting. If there's no questions or comments, a motion is in order to approve family resource, family resource and youth services center assurances to be submitted to the Cabinet for Health and Family Services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Daryl, second by Stephanie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Faith. Thank you, board. Next, I'd like to ask our finance director, Mr. Rodney Jackson, our chief financial officer, Mr. John White, to come forward to present the monthly financial report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The general fund review for the month, December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, reflects revenues higher than one percent last year. Expenses are also one percent higher than last year.
Right. Will you mind switching mics? Cause that mic does, it's not that clear. Thanks.
Better.
That's better.
The general fund review for the month of December two thousand, um, seventeen, December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, reflects revenues higher by one percent at the same time this year than last year. Expenses are also higher than one percent comparing to two thousand eighteen, two thousand seventeen budget. If you see in green, at the blue arrow, it reflects a hundred forty-eight million dollar fund balance. The summary of all funds combined shows total revenue of approximately three hundred ninety million, total expenditures approximately two hundred and one million. There's a hundred million dollars net fund balance, including all funds. This is the detail of all funds combined. Again, just pointing out on Fund Three Ten related to capital aid, we received one point eight million at the beginning of the year and we received the second one point eight million at the end of the year. The revenue with operating beginning balance shows two hundred eighty-nine million this year versus two hundred eighty-one million last year is eight million dollars difference. Digging deeper, uh, without beginning balance, it was two hundred thirty-nine million this year versus two hundred thirty-one million last year. Total expenditures, one hundred forty-five million, two thousand eighteen, one hundred thirty-seven point five. We are seven million, seven point five million dollars higher than last year at the same time. Our balance sheet reflects total assets, a hundred forty-eight point six million, um, liabilities, five hundred and six thousand. Our financial position remains sound in relation to assets versus liability. In relation to our trust funds, Marcy Thomas, two hundred thousand, Dorothy Smith, nineteen thousand, John Price, forty thousand. All other trust funds have been transferred to Bluegrass Community Foundations as per our agreement. Are there any questions or concerns?
Questions, comments? If not, a motion is in order to accept the monthly treasurer's report of revenue expense reports as presented to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stephanie, second by Ray. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney. Thank you, John. Thank you, board. Uh, tonight, we also have two informational presentations for you. I first like to ask our health and wellness coordinator, Mrs. Debbie Bowen, or Dev, I see Dev coming forward, to give us a brief update on the two thousand seventeen wellness report, including the public feedback received during the comment period.
Good evening and thank you all for all that you do for us. I know that as a health person with our health and PE people, we really appreciate the support that we get from the board and from the community. It was really nice tonight to see all of our community folks here. Um, we just completed at five o'clock our public forum for our wellness report. We went over the report with you last month. We had seven people in attendance. They included school nurses, PE teachers, and representatives from Lex Ed. And the highlights were, we want to focus on healthy rewards in our classrooms because so many of our students have allergies now. We want to make sounder the wellness policies and make stronger our wellness committees in individual schools. And we also would like to look into a comprehensive health curriculum that includes, um, comprehensive sex ed. So we will put those comments into our wellness report and we will write up a little report for you as well and send them forward. Anybody have any questions?
Questions, comments? Thank you for your hard work on this. Yay.
Thank you, Debbie. For that, next, I'd like to ask our budget director, Julaine Mullins, and our chief financial officer, Mr. John White, to come forward to present the two thousand nineteen draft budget and five, you're gonna pull it up.
Good evening.
Evening.
As you know, January is a time that we discuss our draft budget with you moving forward. Were we required to have conversations to kick, to kick the budget season off with you in January, but no actions required and no reports are, uh, required by KDE? We wanted to start our budget presentation off to you tonight by just sharing some of our process and timeline. Uh, we go over this internally, but I don't know that, um, we've ever shared it with our board, so we wanted to do that tonight.
And before you move, I think that picture says it all, right? So, go back. Go back. I know time is late and everybody's, we, we, we have to just pause for a second, right? And it's so interesting that we're living in these days and times where you have to profess loudly and vocally your love for public schools. You would think that that was just be a tacit sort of understanding implied implicit that we all would know that. But this is taken from the November rally on our Capitol, right? And where we shared our love for our public schools and that advocacy continues, uh, today. And so that's gonna play out as we look at FY nineteen in terms of our budget. And just as our students from Creek Elementary, um, core saying, keep your head up, stay strong. All right, go ahead.
And live in peace.
Our goal in preparing our district budget is to make sure that the, uh, ensure that the allocation, resource allocation process is, is transparent and that it aligns with our district's strategic plan to meet the needs of all students. As I said before, I just want to spend a few minutes going over our budget timelines, uh, just to let you know what the process looks like as we move forward. Monthly, we're looking at trends in revenue collections from previous years and we're constantly looking to identify, uh, changes to follow up on. For monthly, we're also meeting with our senior level directors to review our initiatives and progress, discuss funding priorities for our strategic plan for the FY nineteen school year. We're having quarterly meetings with our school principals and our department managers to review their budget and talk about, uh, potential changes. In September, as you will, will recall, the governor's office requested a current mid-year reduction of seventeen point four percent across all state agencies. That amounted to approximately one point one million for Fayette County Public Schools and, uh, it actually impacted our flex focus and our frisk, frisky grants for the upcoming school year. They did, uh, send out a, um, a revision because the governor did a revision. He didn't, um, reduce state agencies as much and, uh, we had that information and we're just waiting for them to, uh, correct district allocations to find out what the actual final, uh, reduction is gonna be for school districts. In October, our DPP office, we started working with them on preliminary student enrollment projections for two thousand nineteen. In November, uh, our second month average daily attendance growth report was received and we, uh, started data verification for our state funding for two thousand nineteen. November, we also began monthly review of our expense line items and began contacting agencies for anticipated changes such as energy costs, various insurances, workers comp, unemployment. Uh, we started working with those stakeholders, uh, just beginning to get preliminary information. In December, we also began our monthly meetings with our superintendent and district leadership team to begin, uh, funding priorities that align with the strategic plan for the, uh, nineteen school year. And those will go on monthly as well from this point forward and probably bi-weekly as we move closer into the budget season. In January, the legislative session began and, uh, it's, it's a sixty-day session and they must be completed by April fifteenth. Lots of times, we will not know final information until the end of March. But, uh, on January sixteenth, the governor released his proposed state budget. At the DLM meeting, uh, we provided, uh, schools with their preliminary projected enrollment and their section six allocations for the upcoming school year. And also, we have worked hard with our gifted and talented office on trying to finalize our special programs, uh, sooner for our enrollment projections to be, uh, more on target, just trying to tighten that process up. And so those are due back on January thirty-first. Also this month, we have began working with our, um, departments on budget prep and needs assessment. We met with the budget and finance commi, uh, committee earlier this evening. I believe the, uh, board approved the CDEP in January, uh, at the planning session. And so, and tonight, we're discussing our, uh, draft budget with the board. As we move forward in, in February, we will be working with our, uh, departments as well as our schools, having work sessions for our, uh, budget and staffing work sessions. We'll start our year-end reviews with our state and federal grant managers to develop spending plans for the upcoming school year. In March, we're required to provide, uh, sections four, five, and six allocations to SPDM council. That's their staffing allocations as well as their operating dollars. And also, uh, school council exit interviews are conducted with, uh, district leadership staff. Budget depart, uh, departments are finalizing their budgets and submitting them that align with their strategic plan. Uh, non-renewal and reduction letters are being delivered to principals and hiring managers and certified and classified, uh, classified evaluations are due for all non-renewals. In April, the legislative session ends. We have, uh, deadline for board to approval of, uh, staffing policy changes for the eighteen, nineteen school year. Tentative budget priority recommendations are finalized by the superintendent and senior leadership team. We are reviewing salary schedules, uh, and recommending changes. Uh, budget work begins in our MUNA system, which is our financial system. The budget package is finalized and hiring process begins for the upcoming school year. In May, tentative SPD, SPDM allocations are finalized and section six dollars are allocated. They are made available. Staffing policy changes are submitted to KDE. Tentative budget is reviewed by our budget and finance committee. Salary schedules, our tentative budget, and our state assurances are submitted and to our board and asked for approval. We are also, uh, required at this point in time to submit, uh, KDE, a final, uh, balanced tentative budget and so that is sent off as well. In June, we're still, we're, we're working with our finance team and our various stakeholders to review the year-end process and we're making adjustments where needed. We're meeting with our grant managers to receive final awards on their, to finalize their spending plans while they're closing out their old year, uh, grants. And the district annual attendance report is sent to KDE. In July, we're rolling new year budgets into our MUNA system. Certified property assessments and tax rate informations are received by districts. Budget discussions continue with our superintendent and our district leadership team to prepare for the final working of budget that you will be asked to approve in September. And we have our unaudited annual financial report and balance sheet submitted to KDE. In August, our tax rate hearings, uh, are held and our tax rates are adopted by the board. Our levy tax rates are submitted to KDE. SPDM allocations are adjusted. Revenue projections and fund balances are locked in and the working budget package is In September, um, again, we're meeting with the budget and finance committee. The working budget is presented to the board and adopted and we are sending that information. The working budget is presented to the board and adopted and we are sending that information on to KDE. In October, we're just checking our budget to make sure everything in MUNIS is verified for accuracy. And in November, the audit is finalized. Any budget adjustments based on the audit are made. Second month adjustments are received from KDE and are made with SBDM allocations. Eligible carryforward funds are calculated and provided to councils for reallocations. And we start the process all over again with our superintendent and leadership team to start the process for our 2020 budget. I guess we wanted to share this information with you to let you know kind of what the timeline looked at like. And, you know, we just don't pull a budget together in a few months. We're actually working on it all year long. At any point in time, you have three years open. You have... You're trying to close your prior year. You've got this year that you started and you've already started planning for the upcoming school year. So we just wanted to take a few minutes and share that with you all and answer any questions that you have and just give you an overview of what's going on in our building.
And so, I want to thank you, Elaine, for sharing with you just a overview of timeline and some details regarding process. Next, we're going to do a share with you sort of our thinking in terms of a SCOT analysis. Most of you are more familiar with the SWOT analysis, looking at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We changed it to SCOT, thanks to Bob Moore, because we're looking at the strength, our challenges, opportunities, and threats. So some of the strengths of Fayette County: growing economy and rising property values, committed community, invested in public education, peak performing board, and we acknowledge that this evening. Nationally recognized programs, some of which were recognized this evening as well. Talented and skilled workforce. A guaranteed and viable literacy curriculum, K-12. You heard some of that mentioned when Amber spoke about Russell Cave and wonders. We also have that curriculum for English language learners, Level One, all the way through. Strategic plan defining pathway into the future, right? And with the reading curriculum, we also have math at the secondary level for algebra, geometry, and Algebra II. So those are some of the strengths. We could go on, but in the interest of time, let's get to the challenges and the opportunities. The challenges. And you heard this from Amber. Only one out of two students are ready for kindergarten at Russell Cave. 96% of the students were not ready for kindergarten. In our district, African-American students, 39% were ready for kindergarten. Latino students, one out of four. Students with disabilities, one out of four. Students free and reduced lunch, one out of four. So you see clearly that the gap occurs before students enter the schoolhouse gate. So that's a challenge, persistent challenge, not just for us, but across the Commonwealth. So we would see as an opportunity to expand early childhood education. Another challenge: meeting ongoing social and emotional health needs of our students. Our teachers see it. And an opportunity would be to increase funding for therapeutic and mental health care of students and those services. So if you think about the opportunity, where would you leverage any new dollars? Continuing challenge is meeting the needs of students who are English learners, gifted, talented, students with disabilities. Those needs and resources, we need to continue to align. As you know from the audit that was conducted, it began in November 2015. The information was shared with the board in 2016. And so that continued investment to add our gifted and talented ELL teachers, our special education teachers, and other resources to address those ongoing needs. Amber shared with you at Russell Cave, the co-teaching model. Provide equitable access to a rigorous K-8 math curriculum. We currently don't have that in the district. We have a committee and thanks to our teachers, principals, district staff are working through to bring a recommendation forward to the board to provide, and that's an opportunity, a guaranteed and viable K-8 math curriculum. Other challenges: to increase the number of students who graduate college and career-ready, that's always a goal. We want to continue to expand our high school academy model we currently have at Bryan Station as well as Frederick Douglass. As you know, Tate's Creek has ninth grade academy. We want to expand and include them in our partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and the Business Education Network. We want to always remove barriers to learning for students living in poverty. You heard about that with our 212 recognition. So to provide the appropriate and sustained funding for family resource youth service centers and coordinators, right? That's always an opportunity to grow. Ensure every neighborhood has an excellent school. That's our challenge. The opportunity is to expand the portfolio of school options that meet diverse needs of our students. You saw that Amber shared with you with our empowerment zone. You also know we have a partnership zone. We want to continue to look at a portfolio model to address those diverse needs. Ensure every classroom is led by highly effective educators and talented leaders. And for us, let's continue expanding our professional learning for new teachers induction program in partnership with FCEA. We currently provide that support for first-year teachers and our new teachers this year. We want to expand it to second-year teachers as well as for new and aspiring school leaders and our executive program for them. And we're doing that in partnership with EV CASA. And begin to look at professional growth for all staff. And you know that the new teacher induction is extremely important when you consider one of the programs for elimination was K-TIP. So, you know, you want to make sure that you're supporting them. So in any analysis, there's also threats, right? What could get in the way of you trying to do what you're trying to do? And that's to close the achievement gap. As I said, the gap is growing wider as students... Before students get to kindergarten, we want to make sure that we address that in a systemic way. But what could keep us from closing that gap and move us farther from that goal? When we look at the governor's proposed state budget, looking to reduce SEAC transportation by 62%, what would that mean for us? Approximately 6.5 million. The reduction of 6.25% state grants, including our friskies and preschool. We just shared with you our data as challenges and the opportunity that would impact us with a million dollars. The elimination of professional development, instructional materials, community education grants is approximately 1.8 million. Shift of a portion of employer-paid health insurance to local districts, $3 million. And then shift the substantial cost to local districts by creating new restrictions on local boards. Still looking to weigh that. Pinchot reform, we're all aware of. In December, KRS Board increased FY1819 employer contribution rate for school classified staff, right? And serves from 19.18% to 28.05%, which for us is a $5.4 million increase. Think about those numbers. Let us kind of sink in a little bit.
We're already at 22.7 million.
We're going to keep going.
I know.
We're going to keep going. So you have House Bill 471, charter school funding, House Bill 134, and SB 36, which are, for me, tuition tax credits, if you will. We still need to weigh the economic impact of those bills in law. There was discussion around elimination of the business inventory tax, we know. And if that were to happen, become a bill and become law, that would mean a loss of four to six million dollars. And then, of course, you have your unfunded mandates as utility costs keep going up and everything. 2016, we're looking at increase in sewer fees, of course. Increase employer contribution for KT RS, which result in another 1.2 million. Received notification from the sheriff office required KRS to charge the school district a full 1.5% collection fee instead of our negotiated 1%, which would add an additional $900,000. Now, that's 2016, but as we move to 17, you see the mandated publishing, the financials in the paper. It's just unbelievable. That's $35,000. The IRS ended agreement with Kentucky-related T-FICA and Medicare contribution, 1.9 million. KRS Board increased SIRS contribution, we talked about. That was 2017 increase. 2018, the utility rates keep going up, another 400,000. And then 2019, what's proposed, as I shared with you, are some of the programs that were going to be eliminated. Kentucky teacher internship, professional development programs proposed for elimination. KDE has informed school districts, they will no longer cover the cost for advanced placement exams for our students, right? And then the KRS Board increasing SIRS contribution, as I stated earlier. So, I'll turn it back over to you, Elaine, about the historical funding and some of the trends.
All right. We just wanted to share some graphs in charge. We pulled this from the Kentucky Center for Economic Policy. They did an analysis on transportation funding. As you can see, how the local air... Local share keeps going up, but the state share keeps going down. This is across the state. This shows what the state-funded share was in red and what Fayette County funding is in blue. As you can see, our funding keeps going up. The Fayette County funding keeps increasing and the KDE state funding has remained flat. And again, they have cut that budget by 62% in this governor's proposed budget package. So we expect to see a sharp decline in state funding as our costs continue to move on. This is just some historical on the CERS contributions. As you're aware, already aware, we ask you to approve additional dollars each budget cycle and we just wanted to show you how those costs have fluctuated over the last eight or nine years and how it's projected to go up to the 5.4 million July 1. Also, we wanted to show you some historical preference on our KT RS employer contribution in our general fund. In 2011, we were paying just a nominal amount and were up to over $7 million. We were paying less than a million back in 2011. In 2018, we're... 19, we're paying over $7 million. So that's just how... These are mandated costs that are reoccurring in our budget that have just continually gone up each year without new funding to help provide services. And with that being said, I'm going to turn this over to John and he's going to talk about our revenues.
I was hoping I would get to share in some of the fun. Backing up with that last chart, that first year of the funding, our share was less than a half a million. It was 444,000. And you can see where it went up to. It's unbelievable. Anyway, draft budget revenues: reduction of 62% in SEAC transportation, that's six and a half million. You know, looking back at those charts that we saw before, the funding from the state was about 60... 40%. So this 62%, that's a reduction of the 40% that they were giving us. So that six and a half million is a cut. So we were getting 10 and a half. Six and a half is going away. We'll now get four. Reduction of six and a quarter in state grants and friskies, preschools, about a million dollars. More SEAC money, elimination of PD money, instructional materials, community education, that includes K-TIP, 1.8 million. Shift of the portion of employer-paid health insurance onto local districts, about $3 Part of this next bullet: shift to substantial cost to local districts while creating new restrictions on local board statutory authority to make budget decisions, including local tax revenues, is included in House Bill 200. What that means is basically you will be restricted on the decisions that you can make with our local resources. That's part of the proposal. There has been discussion proposed tax reform and part of that is discussion discontinuing the business inventory tax, which we mentioned earlier, somewhere between four and six... Four and six million dollars. And that fluctuation is primarily due to the inventory levels of the businesses there when their levels at the time of the tax assessment. Four to six million. Let's see. One of these. Here we go. Charter school funding. Additional draft budget revenues. Legislature still being finalized regarding the funding of proposed charter schools. They will redirect the state and local and federal monies away from public schools to the charter schools. Property tax, we will be asking you to adopt a 4% tax rate increase above what we received this year related to the real estate and personal property inventory. All other local revenue streams should remain flat, best we can tell. That's a silver lining, I suppose. Draft budget expenses: potential 2019 additional expenses. The 1.5% salary experience step increase from both certified and classified is just under 3.5 million. CERS projected increase, as we mentioned before, about a 50% increase over FY18, beginning July 1. Unless they change the way that it's set up now, it'll be about just under $5.5 million increase in our costs for the CERS funding for their retirement. New, you're familiar with their moving the STEAM program to the BCTC, La Grasse Community Technical College, getting that program back on the community college... Or getting it on a college campus to where it should be. But that agreement, rent is about $625,000. It's a new expenditure. Dual credit tuition increase, based on today's numbers, is about $350,000. Now, that's all that is predicated on what the lowest rate of tuition per hour in the higher ed system, which historically will probably continue to be the KCTCS rate of tuition. If their tuition goes up, our costs for dual credit goes up. Phase three superintendent's entry plan, about $2 million. Utility cost.
So before you go to utilities, so when you heard from Amber, she talked about the additional EL teachers and special education teachers and our push to include gifted and talented teachers and move into year three, that's what those funds are for, to create debt equity. So as you remember, with our audit, spring of 2016, for ELL students, the ratio was really one to 90. And we're looking to do more of a co-teaching model, obviously reduce that, provide increased support and other resources, as well as have a gifted and talented teacher, at minimum one in every elementary school, right? So a lot of that now is put in jeopardy as a result. So, you continue.
Utility cost for recently purchased property at 1555 Georgetown Road. It's a new facility coming online. Approximate utility cost for the year is about $400,000. Bob was kind enough to share with me a few days ago that Microsoft is increasing their contract about $190,000. A new elementary school that will come open in the FY19... Or FY20, or the school year of 2019, 2020. But in order to plan for that, there are some startup costs and some hiring that must be done, a principal and a bookkeeper, about $175,000. Startup funds for this new school that will come on again... Come online again in the fall of 19, about $750,000. And as you may guess, we have some costs that we know about, but we just don't know the magnitude or the impact that they will have. Again, the charter schools, part of our responsibility will be the oversight and monitoring of that charter school operation. K-8 math curriculum adoption, high school academy, the pilot parameters if we choose to expand where we have academies, expand the program of academy delivery model throughout other schools. Debt service payments for bonds being sold later this year or this spring. Good thing about Fayette County is we're growing and expanding. The bad part is we're growing and expanding where we run into facility shortage. In order to continue to deliver education, additional portables in those areas are needed. So it's a good thing, but it is a challenge. But we... It's... Additional portables is a way to meet that overcrowding. Approved innovative proposals for new and/or expanded programs. Middle school athletics is becoming a bigger part of the budget, being sanctioned under the Kentucky High School Athletic Association. We mentioned earlier sheriff's fees for the property tax collection. At one time, we had an agreed rate of 1%. That's going to... That's now 1.5%. Replacement cycles for various things such as our buses, fleets, equipment, HVAC that needs to be replaced, painting of buildings. I think Governor Bevin mentioned in when he first started his presentation about sprucing up the Capitol and actually making monies available for colleges and universities how their buildings are run down and in dire need of maintenance. need of maintenance, and so is K twelve. Career and technical education centers, funding structure, the state funding for these things are going down. District insurances that we mentioned out before that are bid out in April and May, like every other kind of service we purchase, more than likely, these costs will continue to escalate like everything else. School health and wellness contracts. And I guess in keeping with the Mustang pride, we will stay positive, work hard, and make it happen. There's a lot of good people in the financial services area, Rodney's area, Jelaine's budget financial planning, together as a team, we can work through this. There's a lot of other people that have input and good ideas and supportive board, supportive community, we will make it happen. We will entertain any questions, comments, concerns, or criticisms you may have.
I think for our listening audience, we may need to clarify some things, and I don't want to get too political. First of all, people need to understand that our facilities fund is a complete different fund from our general fund. I still have people ask me, why are we spending money on new buildings when we, you know, are so short of money? It's a completely separate fund. We can't use our facility funds for things that we pay for from the general fund. Luckily, we have had the bonding capacity and our nickel tax increase, um, to, to really boost that facilities and we can, you know, build new facilities and, and remodel and renovate. By the same token, if everything that the governor said in his budget proposal comes to pass, just with his initiatives, it, it, it will cost us, I'm calculating at least eighteen million dollars, an additional eighteen million dollars. And that's not counting the things that we kind of knew, the expansion of our gifted and talented, the expansion of our, our academies, um, our friskies. We have just started to scratch the surface on our academies, on our friskies, on our mental health, on adding gifted and talented, um, on our new teacher induction program, on our professional development, our aspire, and our aspiring leaders. If this budget comes to pass, we will not be able to do these. And each year, I think, how can it get much worse? How can it get much worse? I, again, not wanting to get too political, it, it, this can't happen. And we just need as much advocacy as we can possibly get in Frankfurt. Sorry, that's my, I shouldn't.
That's all right. That's why I love my public schools.
Oh, I love my public schools.
Well, Jelaine and John, what, all I would say was, is that, you know, we don't know what the political process will shake out, uh, but we can see reality and take action and so we know we're going to have less to work with. Let's assume that, right? What I would try to make sure that we do this upcoming cycle is that, two things that we need to get better at. One is hitting our timelines. You know, Frankfurt will present us with their timelines, but we, we need to have time for discussion, so we're not rushed when we're making decisions about, um, what to do with less. So, we have to hit our timelines. And I will, you know, last year, I felt a little bit rushed. We had some good discussion and we got a lot done in a, in a short period of time, but we have got to, uh, hit our timeline so we have an ability to really digest some of the things that we need to deal with. And I will continue to encourage all of us, but you guys especially, to create a greater transparency around the budget as much as you can, um, so that the public, our parents, can understand with it step by step what we're doing. They can see the year-to-date, they can understand what was budgeted, what was spent, what's actual percentages over last year, so they can pick up a piece of paper and see and identify the actual cuts that are happening in programs that are near and dear to them. Because what we're going to have is people coming to us trying to save or encourage the things that are important to them. What we have to identify is that what's going on around us that's causing us to make those decisions. So, let's continue to work on that. I know you guys have a hard job in front of you, work on our transparency, and let's work on our timelines so we have the ability to make the time to make these decisions.
I also think there's a little misunderstanding about, um, what exactly we have in reserves and what those reserves are used for. We don't have billions of dollars in our reserves. We are mandated by law to keep between six and eight percent, am I correct? We are mandated by law to keep that in our reserve. We would be one catastrophe away from having a broke school system. Therefore, if we are asked by the governor to dip into those reserve funds, we would be breaking the law. So, I'm not sure who's advising him, I'm not sure where he got that information from, but that is something that we just cannot do.
I would, I would say, and I checked with Jelaine, is it statutory or just a recommendation? I thought it was more of a recommended.
Statutory, we're, we're required to have two percent.
Yeah.
KD recommends for district our size to maintain a six to eight percent.
Okay. And six percent would be what, like, two months operating expenses of a catastrophe? Less than?
Well, the contingency that we have is thirty-one point five million dollars and, and that will only carry us over about three weeks of expenses.
Three weeks.
So, it, you know, it's, it's, we need that cushion.
Absolutely.
And then the other thing about the contingency, to, to reduce it down to that two percent mark, not only is it not physically responsible, but it also could raise some flags when it comes to our credit agencies.
Certainly would hurt our bonding capacity and our credit rating, absolutely.
So, that, yeah, I'm not comfortable with the two percent level and I, I, the six percent is really, to me, is borderline the cutoff.
Well, and in just trying to get the correct narrative out there, appreciate your transparency, as Ray said, and anything we can do to better inform our constituency, we're all for it.
All right. Thank you, John. Thank you, Jelaine. Thank you, board. We also have several written informational items for the board's review, including a biannual construction report as of December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, the school activity funds report, the personnel changes for January, and a position control document. If there are no questions about any of those items, that concludes the board agenda for this evening, and we do have a need to go into closed session tonight.
Okay. First, um, we now will entertain speakers who have signed up to speak to anything that is not on the agenda. Members of the public may address the board during the period set aside by the board without submitting an item for the agenda. No action shall be taken during this portion of the meeting on issues raised by employees or the public unless deemed an emergency by the board. Please note, speakers will not be allowed to make any disparaging or critical remarks about individuals or employees of the district. Critical comments or complaints are processed through the district's complaint procedures, which afford the individuals to whom comments or complaints are directed the opportunity for response and due process. At this time of the meeting, members of the public who have signed up prior to the meeting are invited to address the board on any topic of district-related concern that is not on the official agenda. As I said, since these items are not on tonight's agenda, our board may or may not comment, and it's important to know that this will not be, um, time that is intended for debate. Because we need to go into closed session, um, I will allow three minutes, um, per speaker, and we have two speaking on, um, Tate's Creek renovation, Ginny Adams and Becky Pfister. Are you all speaking on the same thing? Do you all want to come together, or do you need separate time?
And remember, one of those microphones isn't as good as the other.
Check, check. Check, check.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've been teaching English at Tate's Creek High School for four years now. I'm here to raise awareness about significant health issues we've been facing at Tate's Creek that stem from the poor air quality in our building. The teachers at our school have been raising concerns about mold in our building for years now. Our principals have been very supportive in requesting help with this issue from the district. There's been testing done on several areas of our building that have shown high levels of mold. Unfortunately, the recommendation offered for eliminating the mold is a short-term solution that does not prevent it from coming back. When I arrived in my classroom in late July to start setting up for this school year, I found green mold covering a patch of the wall and growing on student tables. In September, I found green mold growing on one of my ceiling tiles. Thankfully, we have a wonderful custodial staff at Tate's Creek, and with help from risk management, the visible mold was cleaned out of my classroom within a couple of days. My biggest concern now is the air quality. The problem's not limited to the area around my classroom. Significant mold growth has been reported in several areas of the building. Even after moldy ceiling tiles removed from our science workroom, water continued to leak from the ceiling. Four teachers I know of from all over the building have reported leaks in their classrooms, some of which have poured water onto student desks during classes. I know district officials are well aware of problems with our HVAC system and roof. The HVAC system is significantly undersized and the roof has many areas that are leaking. These issues are fostering significant mold growth. The amount of mold present in our building is causing staff and students to experience significant illnesses that prevent them from working and learning to their full potential. I've had two students in particular who suffered from migraines severe enough to keep them home from school, and both have noted that the migraines are much more severe and frequent during the school year. One of our science teachers has been dealing with significant respiratory problems over the past several years. She's had to use an inhaler at times when she's been unable to breathe properly during the school day, and her doctor has verified that her problems are due to a severe mold allergy she's developed since working at Tate's Creek. A teacher that is new to our special education department this year has started weekly immunotherapy in the last several months because she's had such a bad allergic reaction to the mold. Her doctor has confirmed that her illness is caused by the poor air quality in our building. I myself have been experiencing sinus headaches, congestion, and sore throats almost constantly this school year. On November sixth, testing showed that my classroom contained one thousand two hundred spores of penicillium per cubic meter. Surely enough, I tested positive for an allergy to that same strain of mold this month, and my ear, nose, and throat doctor is confident that mold exposure is causing my illness. Surf Pro cleaned my classroom right before winter break, but no testing has been done to confirm that the mold levels have gone down. We also have concerns about the climate of our building. On April fourteenth last year, the, the temperature in my classroom was seventy-eight degrees. A fan and a dehumidifier in a windowless cinder block room didn't do anything to help that temperature go down. It took about a week for maintenance to fix some issue with the air ducts above my classroom ceiling, and students were sitting in seventy-eight degree temperatures for that entire week. Overall, I have documentation for fourteen days throughout two thousand and seventeen during which our HVAC system malfunctioned, causing a bad climate all throughout our building.
Thank you. I'm Becky Pfister.
I'm kind of in awe. I had no idea what she was going to say, as I know she works at Tate's Creek, but I don't really know her, um, and she had no idea what I was going to say. But anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight to also talk about the renovations at Tate's Creek High School. The administration and the staff is amazing, so I just, this isn't a complaint. But my daughter is a freshman at Tate's Creek High School, and, um, being on the dance team, she has been practicing in the facility since April. As of July, uh, she was referred to Cincinnati Children's for migraines. I didn't know there was other students, um, until this, but, um, it may or may not be because of the air quality, but the fact that it started at the same time that she started spending significant time in the building has me wondering. But as I've talked to staff about her condition and medications and treatment plan, I then learned that there were other staff members and possibly students that are ill as well, so that's why I felt compelled to come. I'm a product of Fayette County Public Schools. I currently have a student. I've had two graduate from Fayette County. I work for Fayette County. I've never been to a board meeting. So, with that said, that's how strongly I feel about, um, coming here tonight to, to discuss this. But I know that it's in discussions, um, just wanted to push and, um, say that I feel it's really important. I am so thankful for Mr. Mills and his leadership. He's been wonderful. I know he appreciates your all's support, as he has said. But Tate's Creek High School is full of amazing educators and they deserve a better facility if for no other reason than the health of the students and the staff. I'm getting, I'm on a committee to do my thirty-year high school reunion there this fall, and, uh, there's not been a whole lot of changes in those thirty years there, so, anyway, thank you for listening and I hope that you all will make it a priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think our chief operations officer, Byron Thompson, because we have made this a priority, and he can share to the teachers here and to the public, the work we're doing at Tate's Creek High School.
Uh, thank you, Superintendent Cork. Uh, I think in response to, uh, these issues, as shared earlier, we've had extensive renovations and new construction over the past, uh, couple of years in particular that we shared, but since, uh, two thousand and, or at least nineteen ninety-six, we've done over seven hundred million in various construction projects. And as you currently know, we do have a two thousand and seventeen, uh, facility plan on the books that shows that we have three hundred and thirty-two million in unmet needs, three hundred and twenty-seven million, I'm sorry, in unmet needs. So, as blessed as we are in Fayette County with the nickel tax, Melissa, and with all the wonderful facilities that we do have in the district, we still have needs throughout this, uh, district, uh, and Tate's Creek is high on that list, as you very well know. It is one of nine schools that are scheduled for a renovation, and as indicated, it's a matter of timing when that will take place. Uh, we've worked very closely with the staff, the custodial staff, the principals in terms of addressing these issues. We've done extensive sampling, uh, in terms of indoor air quality, there are no mold issues presently, but we do anticipate those to pick up in the spring, as happens in all of our schools, being in Kentucky, uh, mold is just a common problem throughout. Uh, we have had some issues that we are fully addressing in terms of the roof. Uh, we are going to spend upwards of a million dollars to fix the roof, uh, prior to the renovation taking place. So, that is more of a long-term strategy, something that will not be impacted by the renovation, but nevertheless, we are taking steps to address that. The issue that she mentioned about the HVAC will require an extensive renovation, and again, it's a matter of timing in terms of when that will happen. Uh, right now, I would forecast construction to start somewhere around two thousand and twenty and to be completed by two thousand and twenty-two in terms of addressing the HVAC needs for Tate's Creek High School.
Any questions? I know you mentioned the roof and the million dollars that's going to proceed.
Yes, uh, because that will not impact the actual construction inside the four walls. We've been patching here and there, uh, we've done this in phases, there's four phases that we're working on for that building, and we will pretty much have that part done before two thousand and twenty. Uh, we're actually starting this spring and will continue work over the summer for the roof. So, that is a big part of having those leaks addressed in various areas. But again, I, I must reiterate that our risk management staff is, is sampling, uh, constantly for indoor air quality issues, and as we find issues occasionally that are elevated, we work very closely to address those, but there are no immediate health issues today as we stand with Tate's Creek High School.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, for addressing that. Thank you. Um, next two speakers, Michelle Mingo and Kristin Mark are come discussing comprehensive sex ed. Do you all still need three minutes apiece?
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much, uh, for letting us speak with you tonight. I'm Dr. Kristin Mark, an associate professor in the College of Education at University of Kentucky. Last time I sat before you, uh, I talked about how the US ranks number one for unintended pregnancy, excuse me, and that Kentucky ranks number seven in the US. I talked about how the young people of Fayette County have doubled the rate of STIs to the rest of Kentucky. Um, I gave you several statistics to try and convince you of the drastic need for comprehensive sex ed in our county. Tonight, I'm here to talk about consent. An important consequence and primary aim of comprehensive sex ed is consent. Earlier this evening, during Debbie's wellness report card meeting, several school nurses discussed with us the desperate need for our proposed guidelines, given that there are eleven, twelve, and thirteen-year-old girls who are pregnant here in Fayette County. They're having sex. Don't we want our kids to have the tools to say no to sex when they aren't ready? Don't we want these kids to grow into adults to also be able to navigate sexual experiences in healthy relationships so that they feel good about sex when they do have it? Further, teaching kids about the, using the proper names for their body parts, letting them know it's okay to talk about it, that genitals aren't silly, that sex isn't something that they should be ashamed of talking about. If they get the message that it should not be talked about, how are they going to feel comfortable talking to a trusted adult if somebody does violate their body? We want kids to understand the value of their own self-worth, and that's a huge part of comprehensive sex ed, and the kids in Fayette County are not currently getting that. We should not be surprised by the Me Too movement. We should not be surprised that girls and women and men and boys don't know how to navigate consent in even the best of sexual situations. This is a direct result of shame-based, abstinence-only sex education and a lack of comfort in talking about sex openly. As we speak, bills are being proposed in Frankfurt that would affect the way Kentucky- public schools teach sex education. These bills have stimulated conversations all around the state about whether we're doing enough to make sure our kids can make healthy, educated, and responsible decisions about sex. As a coalition, we're asking you to act in this moment and provide a model for the rest of the state. Commit to providing our children comprehensive sex education they both need and deserve. We are more than willing to meet with each and every one of you to discuss the ways in which tangible actions can be taken, so that you can help us to make sex ed, comprehensive sex ed, a reality for the Fayette County public school students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michelle Mingo, and I'd like to take a few minutes to tell you why I am fighting alongside Lex Ed to see comprehensive sex education brought to the students of Fayette County. For eight years, I worked with middle and high school students teaching postponing sexual involvement and reducing the risk, both very common, abstinence-only education curriculums. As we speak, PSI is in some Fayette County public schools. One of the most common arguments against comprehensive sex education is that this matter should be taught at home by parents. However, my own experience teaching sex ed led me to discover that this isn't being done. I would often begin a class with an anonymous survey to see how many students had received the talk from their parents. Typically, less than half had received some form of guidance, ranging from discussions of puberty to the full gamut. Even the students who had talked to their parents weren't always receiving correct information. And no fault of their own, most adults are not current on STI facts and all the various methods of birth control that are now available. Ask yourself, do you know all the latest information? Our children often don't even receive simple, simple information about puberty. My own daughter is in middle school and has not received a single word of guidance from her teachers regarding the changes happening in her body. My daughters are lucky to have a mother who will provide them with that information. However, as I mentioned before, not all students are fortunate enough to receive comprehensive self-education at home. How can young people be expected to make educated decisions when they don't even have All children and teens deserve to know the facts concerning their bodies, so they can make educated and healthy decisions. For the freshman girl in my class who already had a baby at home, telling her to wait until marriage was not a feasible option. For the fourteen-year-old girl who confided in me that she feared she was pregnant, comprehensive sex ed could have provided her with the information she needed to avoid this difficult situation. Not every young person is going to be able to just say no. As a sex education instructor who witnessed the cost of abstinence-only curriculum firsthand, I say this: By providing sex education that fails to go beyond the topic of abstinence, we are failing these kids. I ask you tonight to commit to providing our children with the age-appropriate, comprehensive sex education they both need and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your advocacy, but I do need to go ahead and make something clear. Our, we can't do that. We cannot do what you are asking. You're barking up the wrong tree. You need to go to Frankfurt and get our legislators to change the Kentucky state standards. Right now, Fayette County follows the Kentucky state standards. As long as the state standards are the way they are, that's what's going to be taught. It's not even our decision. It is based on the decision at the school between the principal and their site-based council on what they teach. And we were told a number of times when you've come to speak that Jefferson County approves some standards. That's simply not true. They did not do that. We cannot do that. It's purely based on what happens with the principals and the site-based council at the schools, as well as what's on the Kentucky state standards. We cannot interfere in anything site-based council related. We can't, as a board, it's state statute that we cannot interfere or give our own suggestions to site-based council, because that would be interfering in the operations of a daily, of a school.
All right, so there we are.
Thank you.
We do have a need to go into most, into closed session, so I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to KRS six one point eight one oh one B to discuss acquisition or sale of real property, KRS six one point eight one oh one C to discuss proposed or pending litigation, and pursuant to KRS six one point eight one oh one F to discuss personnel. I'm moved. Motion by Stephanie, second by Doug, all in favor, please say aye. Motion carries five zero, we're now in closed session.